Everybody good?
Yeah.
Welcome to Nottingham. This is the Board of Selectmen's workshop for Tuesday, December 21st. During this workshop, we will be discussing the budget for the town. And that is what's the only item on agenda tonight. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most wonderful time of the year.
Yep. So, were the edits, Donna, were you gonna make the edits as we go down or since you arrived?
So, I need most of you two. I did have some questions, so I didn't make them all.
Did we want to go through everything as a line item? And we'll just start going through and calling out what line items we all chose? Or is that gonna be an easier way to do it for you?
Good, I do, I have a completed proposal that I could walk through.
Why don't we go line by line?
Yeah.
If we go line by line, then we can say, okay, Tyler wants to cut this, John wants to cut this, Ben. Unless you have a more global.
Well, yeah, it is, it is more of a global. But there are a lot of, well, actually, I don't want to say a lot, because there aren't a lot of line item adjustments. But, but I was able to get the increase down to 6.38%, which is a heck of a lot better than 10 and a half. And I preserved the new positions.
What was the high level of how you did that?
So... Need to track that. Alright, so... I'll just go through section by section, and I'll point out the things that I... The things that I felt we couldn't change, right, for whatever, you know, whatever reason.
So, Dr. Sitt, would it be easier for us to follow through as a line item? Because what you're gonna say for suggestions?
They already be covered.
May, but no, may, uh... As we go through, do we want to discuss about every option? So, on line 21 or, you know...
Yeah, like if one of us wants to cut 2,000 and the other one wants to cut 1,000. Yeah, I mean, everything is up for discussion, for sure.
I mean, I want to hear what you've got to say.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because that sounds great, Donna.
Yeah, but if you're gonna go section by section, why not just go line by line?
Right, and it's not every line, right? So...
Right, I was gonna read through.
But, yeah, I'll, you know, I'll certainly, because I want to explain, you know, the rationale behind
Sure.
why I chose the things I did, you know?
Yeah, and I'd like an option to explain too, from why I was thinking and why.
Yeah, yeah.
So that everybody knows where we're coming from.
And I personally think that there's gonna be some things that we're not gonna be able to make a decision on, that we're gonna have to ask for more information on.
Right, right, yeah, actually, there's one item that I picked that I don't know if we can do it or not, but...
But I do think, Tony, rather than going section by section, we can go section by section, but we can say, okay, who had any changes in this section?
I mean, we can, yeah.
But we're gonna end up going through it twice, if we do section by section and then have to start, we could do that.
Right, right.
Know what I mean?
Yeah.
I just wanted this to go as efficient as possible.
Oh, I agree.
That's the goal.
That's why, it's like, let's go through it once.
Well, I started with the sheet from the 7th that has all the new positions in it, right? The four full-time firefighters and the split position for rec and highway, right?
Yeah.
And, and the reason I wanted to preserve those positions is basically, you know, obviously, we're trying to move to 24/7 coverage in the fire station. And then, you know, given the troubles the chief has had retaining people, we know that's gonna get worse. If he's not, if he doesn't have the staffing to shift to that... That more contemporary scheduling model, he's gonna end up losing people in addition to not getting the new people he wants, right? So, you know, I don't want to see that happen. So that, you know, and, and plus, between rec and highway, they could have each hired their own person, independent of each other, but they decided to, you know, team up and split one between them, which, you know, I think was pretty responsible of them to do that.
So philosophically, I disagree with you on the fire. And I think I'm probably the only board member who feels this way, but I think it's a really big ask to hire three people, because the numbers that we're seeing here represent a fraction of the year. And it's gonna be a much bigger number next year.
Next year, right.
So I'm philosophically opposed to that.
Okay. And we can certainly model it with, I mean, taking those out, but I'm just worried about the consequences. But you're right, next year, when it's a full year, it's gonna be much, much higher. But then again, that's the cost of doing business, you know? Unless we choose, as a board, to not have 24/7 coverage at the fire department. That would be...
I mean, I've gotten some feedback from individuals in the... Some of them say that they, they don't really think that the numbers justify it. It's a tough one, for sure, I agree it's a tough one, but... Philosophically, I'm not convinced that we have to hire three new people, or that it's in the best interest to hire three new people. But I'm willing to go through the exercise of...
Yeah, yeah.
And I started, when I plugged in your edits and your edits, I started with the worksheet of all the new hires in there. But I took out, yeah, but I took out the rec department, recs, the shared resource, because they both said that they could do without that.
Right. So, so, yeah, if you want to follow along on that sheet, and then, oh, also, I need to point out that I found some errors in the formulas.
Okay.
So, at the bottom, like, the last two total lines?
Are we all the way, like?
Get down there. And I already corrected them in my copy, but it was... M377, where the percentage change was calculated? It was being divided into the 2020 budget, not the 2021.
And so how did that change things?
It changed it to 10.2% instead of 10.5%. So, it's still up there, but it's still an error. And then, in those, those two lines, line 376 and 377, there were a lot of references to column G, which is the 2020 budget, not 2021, so I've corrected those. Didn't make a big difference, but those are errors all the same.
Okay, can we just go section by section and talk about the lines within each section?
Right.
For the first section being the executive department?
Yep, so, executives, so, the one thing... So, line four, the merit compensation pool, so we, you know, we agreed as a board to a 4% cost of living allowance on top of the merit pool. So we basically doubled that line. We made that decision, I don't think we can, you know, reneg on that now.
Did we motion on that? I, I don't want to reneg on that.
I don't, right here.
I'm in favor of protecting the people that we have.
Yeah, exactly. So I, I put, I use like, green and red boxes to indicate the things that I didn't want to change and the things that I was okay changing. That was, that was a red item, I didn't want to, I didn't want to touch that at all. And then the only other thing I changed was line 22. I'm crazy about this idea, but I don't think we can... So that's the lake host, I don't think we can do that this year.
Okay, so that's line 21?
I'm sorry, twen- yes, 21, sorry.
21.
Yep.
Yeah, that's one that both, apparently, Ben wants to cut it to 4,000.
I want to cut it to five.
He wanted to cut it to five, Tyler didn't flag it. So I talked to Dee Senter about this, because, you know, I said, because there's still the warrant article.
Right.
Right, and so I said, what happens if we cut the operating budget to 5,000, right? And her response was, like, they do have some money because of the way that the summer turned out, and they do have some money from last year left over, it's about 2,000 or something like that. So, she was okay with us cutting that to five, but with the understanding that if it's a different sun, summer, and they run out of money, they would have to come back and ask for more out of that fund. Which is basically gonna happen throughout this, any line that we cut,
Right.
anybody could come back and say, hey, that wasn't enough, I need more. So, that was, you know, Dee was okay with us cutting that from eight to five, knowing that there could be the potential that they would have to come back and ask for more, so...
But there's still the warrant article, right? So there's 10,000 there.
For the fund, yeah.
And then this 8,000 here.
So the idea was to split the immediate need versus being prepared for a big, bigger catastrophic situation.
Right.
So that's why it was different.
So she would be relying on this budget line instead of...
The other one.
In the, okay.
Yeah, so this would fund the lake host program itself.
Specifically.
Yeah.
And that money that other 10,000 we put away is for, it could be used on Nottingham Lake, it could be used on River Lake, it's, I mean, even though Tuckaway's been taking the, you know, because of the programs that they're offered on that lake, it's just different for why some of the funds are being used.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't have my heart set on eliminating this completely, I would prefer not to touch it at all, but I'd be happy cutting it in half or dropping it to five, you know, whatever everybody thinks is reasonable.
I'm okay with dropping it to five, isn't it?
I'm okay with dropping it to five, yep. We're all set, we'll drop that to five.
Okay. Alright.
Did anybody have anything else? That's the only thing I had on that.
Uh, that's the only thing I've seen in that section, yeah.
Yeah, and then everything else in that section is either a cut already or a zero increase, or the increases are due to, you know, the increased price of, you name it. So there's really nothing that's under our control there.
Okay, town clerk? Don't think I...
I didn't have anything in there at all.
I didn't have, um... There, no, not in that section.
Oh, what about the ballot counting machine?
That's in the next section.
That's the next section, elections.
Yeah.
Yes, I didn't have anything either, obviously, we know that. So for the town clerk's department total, that will remain the same.
And that's already a 3% drop anyways.
Yep.
So... Alright, in the election section, so the two items, because we have three elections this year, line 37, line 38, the salaries for the election workers, I don't think we can do anything there, because we need those people to work the elections.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and I did, farther down, on line 45, I did strike the ballot counting machine, I took that 7,000 out.
Your, your, your line numbers are off by one, because that's 44.
I'm sorry, it's, it's line, it's row 45 in Excel, but...
Oh, I see.
Oh, okay.
I see, okay.
In the document, I'm sorry, yeah.
Got it, got it, okay.
I'll refer to it by the, the document number.
Yeah, I mean, that was pretty much universal, that that was a, you know, an area that we could cut.
Before we go back to that, I had a question on line 39, printing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was a little confused about that, too.
So you wanted a $500 reduction, John?
Well, I was looking at what the actual spend in 2020 was. And then, you know, well, it was 2021 was actually spent, and then the rose budget was six. I just, did, are we gonna spend six? Because I was, again, I was looking for a different way to save some money there, I mean, if... And I don't get 2021 budget error.
So it was...
Is that because they, in 2021, they should have had a budget of $4,000 and they didn't budget it correct? That's why there's the error, that's what I'm, that's how I'm reading it.
Alright, so...
Somebody messed up on that line item in 2021, when that should have been $4,000 or something, and they put only $200.
Yeah. So in 2019, they budgeted 1,000, 2020, we budgeted 1,200. Last year was 12, it was only 200, and then maybe that's the typo that they're asking about.
But they're year to date, right?
But the year to date, yeah, the year to date values are...
They're totally off, they're not even close to what they're, what they're budgeting.
Well, the, the year to date is 34, right?
For 21, yeah.
Yeah.
But we only had two elections this year.
Correct.
Not three, so, is... Is 6,000 an appropriate number?
So I had 55.
I, I thought 55.
Yeah, it's 55. What's in the, in the budget for the proposed for two, for 2022?
You had 55 already?
No, it's in the spreadsheet, yeah.
On line 39, EL printing?
Yeah, EL printing, it says 6,000.
No, I guess, I guess.
Mine says 6,000.
No, mine says 55. Alright, well, maybe, oh, maybe I changed that, I changed it because you wanted 500 taken off.
Right, I think we should have a budget of 55, is where I was going with that.
I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that, I think that that's potentially an area where they're either gonna need it or not, and if they need more, they're gonna come back and say, we need more.
Yeah. I mean, I'd even be fine dropping it down to 5,000. Because they haven't come close to that since 2020. And that was, that was another three-election year.
They, no, okay, that's fair, because it is a big election year, because it's like midterm.
Yeah.
Right? But, 2019 was 47 now, but there's also cost increase, right?
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, 5,500 is fair, I think.
Yeah.
So the change on line 39 for the printing, Tyler, you go with 55?
Yeah, I go.
Yeah? We're all set?
Somebody said line 36, the salaries, John, you know...
Yes, I had that.
Yeah, but these guys don't know about that.
Oh, yeah, so I had to drop him down to $10,000. But again, you know, I wasn't really thinking about the three elections that we have coming up, so, it stays, it stays.
So it's currently, it was at 12, and John asked for it to become 10.
But again, with three elections, we might need the whole 12, so...
So put it back?
Yeah.
Strangely enough, in 2020, they budgeted 24,000, spent 20,000 of it, 20,000 and change, so... So why wasn't the ask higher? I mean, I ain't gonna, I, so, I don't want to increase it, but not gonna complain, but...
Okay, so, those were the only, well, so they, I had three in that section. It was the salaries, which we just put back, the printing, which we put to 55, and then the belt box, which we all said, or the belt machine, which we said.
Uh-huh. Yep. Alright. Alright, the next section, finance and admin. I didn't really see much of anything to change there. And the two things that, that in particular, that we can't touch, I don't think, the... Line 57, dues and conferences. You know, that's a cost of doing business item. And the line 60, software licensing. You know, that stuff is, all the more expen- all the software prices are going up this year for whatever reason. So I don't think that's anything we can mess with.
No.
And beyond, beyond that, I didn't see anything else in here that was...
I didn't put any changes in that, yeah.
Okay. Oops. I didn't have anything under, at all, under assessing.
So there was one, um...
I had questions on the mapping.
Yeah, you proposed cutting it from six to five.
Well, because, I mean, we budgeted last year 6,000, and, I mean, so year-to-date, you only spent $2,400.
Oh, yeah, I missed that.
So, I don't know why we need to, why can't, I mean, I know it's easy to keep the same line item, but...
Six to five?
We just did have our revow and all that stuff, so I don't know.
Yeah, so, they're...
I mean, I think you know more about the theory than I do.
Yeah, I think they can get away with five.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, me too.
Tyler, any question on line 79, mapping?
No, but I guess I sent in an email there that, found out the other night that Budget Committee, a lot of these numbers, the bills haven't caught up with the, like, the fire chief, when he was giving his spiel to the Budget Committee, he had numbers that we didn't have. That, things that were, I don't know if they paid yet, but he's taken them out of his budget.
Yeah.
Actually, there was a couple that they were over, what, what shows in here. Like that one, you said they only spent, you know, 2,400.
On the mapping?
Yeah, could be, could be more if the bills haven't, you know...
Oh, true, yeah, yeah. You're saying all the bills haven't come home yet?
Yeah, yeah.
But I think what we can do is give whatever version we come out of tonight with to Betsy, and say, can you just validate it, match it against, you know?
Right, against current invoices.
What I'm envisioning is coming out of here tonight is that we do that, we have her go back and do a check, but that we also are probably gonna have some questions that we ask Dale to address with department heads and have answers for us on the 27th. Right?
Yeah. Alright, is that, is that it for assessing?
So what are we doing with 79? Leave it? Watch out.
No, we cut it to 5,000.
Minus, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure this...
Yeah, six to five. Okay, next section is legal department.
Yeah.
That's already a $15,000 cut.
Yeah. No, nobody had anything there.
No, I didn't.
Oh, wait, Chris had made a note when he sent to us to check for the year, end of year totals and decrease if we can. So we should make a note to that, ask Betsy for that.
Okay, I'm gonna mark that yellow as a... Drag that to work.
I don't see fully fingered that here.
Alright.
Personnel and...
Yep. Excellent, so personnel, so, I didn't have any cuts in there, but there are a bunch of lines that obviously are marked as untouchable, so...
Because they carry over.
Right, line 86, health insurance, you know, that's...
I had a question on line 85.
Okay, blue cross, blue shield?
I mean, are we spending it? I mean, I couldn't see, we didn't spend any in 2020, so...
Yeah, it depends on employee elections from year to year.
Well, no, it's not elections, it's, it's people. And this ties to the second sheet that Chris has in there that makes assumptions about if we have four new personnel, what are their insurance rates gonna be, what's, you know, all, what is all of that gonna be? So he took, what he did is, the plans are broken up by single-family couple, right? And so for all these insurance calculations, he added the people in and said, okay, because we don't know what they're gonna be, let's assume it's a couple.
Right, yeah.
And that's how that stuff populated over into this spreadsheet.
Right. Yeah, I meant benefit elections.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, not...
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Fair, yeah. So, we can't mess with these numbers unless we're changing the number of employees.
Alright, great answer.
And, the other lines I marked as untouchable were like, 90 through 94, those are all...
Yeah.
You know, retirement, retirement contributions, the town share, you know, it's all, it's all fixed, you know, it's outside of our control.
Well, what about line 86, over there, again, talking about position for public works and rec? That's figured in there somehow, even third quarter, or fourth quarter.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't adjust that, because my, my whole goal was to preserve all those positions, so I didn't, I didn't adjust it in my...
What I was thinking we could do, Tony, is like, make all of the adjustments here, and then we could go back and say, okay, what if we applied them to the other spreadsheet? Right?
Yeah, yeah.
So we would still get the comparison of, here's, here's with what we've got...
All the same changes with the positions and all the same changes without the positions.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
Yep, we can absolutely do that.
Will, will be able to have that ready for the 27th?
We should.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
I'm asking.
It's, it's not really that hard.
Okay.
No, not really.
I mean, we can even ask Betsy to make them, but neither one of us can make them, too. Um, one thing that Chris had pointed out, when he emailed us on December 9th, was under, uh, where is it? Under planning, under dues?
Oh, is that the next section?
Uh, no, it's under planning, it's under dues and conferences. It's, um, budget line 101, spreadsheet 102.
Yeah.
He said we could just cut the dues and say, we're not gonna pay the dues.
Or just drop it down to a dollar in case we...
Yeah, yeah, but it, that was, remember, that was the, um, to have, basically to have more clout, right?
To have the voice of that strapping regional.
Yeah. So...
What line was that?
Well, in your spreadsheet, it's 102.
Okay, planning board dues and conferences.
So I, what do you guys think of that?
Yeah, so leave a bucket there, just in case.
John?
Well, are we spending that money or are we not spending the money?
We haven't.
Some...
Could be the first year that they did.
The last time we spent anything significant on that was 2019, that was 460 out of a 750, so... Yeah, we can, we can completely drop that.
I don't think we should, but that's my opinion, but...
Well, tell us why.
Well, I mean, I think that, I mean, the planning board is very busy with what they're doing and stuff like that. You know, and the dues and conferences, if they need it, I rather have the money there.
That's why I say, leave a dollar on there, because if, if they do need it, then at least we'll be allowed to direct some money that way, you know?
Okay, put it as a dollar, works.
And that was the only one in the planning board, I... Didn't see anything in zoning?
Yeah, I didn't have anything in zoning.
Town halls, other buildings.
Okay.
So the two in here, in 121, we gave you, uh, town hall, salary, cleaning. So, I guess it was town hall maintenance.
Yeah, uh, 129.
So...
Community center building maintenance, or...
Well, no, Tyler gave us line 122 to change maintenance. Okay, so we got a couple things here. Tyler wanted to change it to one, to 1,800, and Ben wanted to change it to 2,000. No, Ben wanted to change it to 1,000.
For 122?
Yeah.
So Ben wanted to go one, you wanted to go two?
Well, you know...
Would we compromise at 15?
Well...
So in 2019, we budgeted 2,000, and for 2020, we dropped it to 700. And then we left it at 700 for last year, so...
Actual money spent, says zero.
Yeah, for last year, and then only $30 in 2020, and zero in 2019.
That money was for somebody that's like, if we needed Chris to hire to come in and do a handy job around the place, that's what the money was for, wasn't it?
Right, yeah.
You know, if we needed something fixed around here, that we just needed to hire a guy for a day, or two days, or three days, or whatever it was, just a...
And he couldn't find anyone.
Right, not saying next year could be the same, could be probably, the way things are going, it might not, it might be the same condition next year.
Yeah, so we had a proposal for 1,800 and a proposal for 1,000.
Well, in the last three years, we haven't spent over 100, you know? But, you're right, if we need somebody to do a small job, we need something in there, so...
Question is whether we think you can find somebody.
Right.
Yeah. But, I mean, I'm okay reducing it. I think 1,000 might be aggressive, but...
Drop it down to fifteen hundred, then we're saving a thousand there.
I'm good with fifteen hundred.
What do you think, Ben? Tyler, sorry.
Tyler, you said.
Yeah, I'm good with fifteen hundred.
Hey, and then, let me tell you. See what else in here, one thirty, Ben wants to cut, line one thirty, or one thirty, there was one new spreadsheet, Ben wants to cut it from twenty-five hundred to fifteen hundred.
That would be in line with what we, well, yeah, with what we spent for twenty-one and for twenty, two thousand twenty. It's in that ballpark.
And John, you had wanted to cut it from.
Well, my question's on one thirty-one.
Yours was one thirty-one, right, so town hall building maintenance from two thousand to fifteen hundred.
From twenty-five hundred to fifteen hundred?
Yeah.
I, I'm okay with that.
I mean, I, I, I don't know enough about what they intend to use that money for, or what potentially that money could be used for. And again, I think these kinds of changes that we're making, it's kind of like, it could be smart, or it could not.
It could, yeah, it could shoot us in the foot, yeah.
Some money from someplace else.
Yeah, the, the only guidance we can look at is what did they spend in the last few years, and, and they didn't, uh, we've only spent, you know, as of the seventh, fifteen hundred and sixty dollars in two thousand twenty-one, it was only thirteen fifty, thirteen fifty-six for twenty twenty. And the last time we spent that whole budget was back in twenty nineteen. For whatever, and that might have been a furnace repair or something, I'm not.
We did do a furnace, remember?
Yeah, but apart from that, we haven't come close to spending that whole amount, so I'd be fine dropping that to fifteen hundred.
Tyler, you okay with that?
Yeah. Okay, so one thirty goes to fifteen.
Now, on one twenty-nine, community center building maintenance, I had dropped that from twenty thousand to eighteen, simply because they haven't spent that whole amount.
Which one was that, Tony?
Uh, the one before, line one twenty-nine, community center building maintenance.
Yeah, but there's, there's so far, they're at seventeen, five-ish for this year, to date.
Well, just cut it back to nineteen, keep it consistent. Same amount as twenty-one.
Well, twenty, twenty twenty was twenty-two.
Yeah, I know. Year before that, uh, twenty nineteen was thirty-seven thousand, and they spent thirty-six and change.
I would le, I, again, I'd feel personally comfortable just leaving it at twenty, thinking that this year should go over nineteen.
Yep.
You think it will?
Well, they have fifteen hundred dollars to go.
Yeah, I know.
So, that seems like.
There's only, well, yeah, all the, there's only a couple of weeks left in the year, but.
We don't know.
Tyler said there's, there could still be outstanding bills. All right, so we wanna leave that one alone? I, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Good.
One thirty-four.
I had one thirty-one.
Oh, yeah, one thirty-one, John wanted to cut it by five hundred dollars.
All right, so twenty twenty, didn't even spend half of it, twenty-one, only spent forty-eight hundred. Okay, we, we could probably drop it a thousand dollars comfortably. Uh, duh, 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 duh.
Fire station building maintenance.
One thirty-one.
So that would put it at sixty-five, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Tyler?
Yep.
That was line one thirty-one.
Yep.
You did what?
On one thirty-four, so library building maintenance. And John, well, uh, Steve, we're not gonna be able to give you every line as we go through.
So, does the new fire station building maintenance was one thirty-one, fire department building maintenance is number one thirty-two?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, why do we have two line, I mean?
That's the one over here, the old fire station?
It's a, it's a dollar.
Oh, that's the old fire, never mind, I got it, okay, now I got the old, we call one the new station, we call one the fire depart, okay, never mind, my bad. Yeah, one dollar, that's fine.
On one thirty-four, Ben wants to cut the library building maintenance from two thousand to five hundred. Seems a little drastic to me. I mean, it's only showing three thirty-one is the year and date actual, but I can't believe that's correct.
Yeah, I can't, I can't believe that either.
And the actual in two thousand twenty was forty-eight.
Yeah, twenty nineteen, it was twenty-nine sixty, so.
Well, I was just gonna actually ask you, do you see any general maintenance that needs to be done around that building?
We have extensive maintenance issues around the building.
Well, we have different articles coming up about different, like, for ramps and stuff like this, but I'm just saying, like.
Yeah, this is, these are things like, uh, the fact that we have moved the building ground in the outside of the building, we have door frames that are rotting, we have cracked and loose siding, we have, we were told two days ago that the furnace is on its last legs, we had a plumbing leak two weeks ago. We have, it, it's, the, the expansion is twenty-one years old and is starting to have some issues.
So.
Yeah, I'd leave that alone.
I say we leave it.
Yep, I'll leave that where it is.
Thank you for being here.
Yep, for that question.
Um. One fifty-five.
That's town.
Yep, Ben wants.
Town hall are the buildings for the dumpster.
Bill wants, uh, Ben wants to cut that from thirty-two to twenty-six. Uh, I mean, I don't know, it, it was, looks like it's been around twenty-five to, to three, I don't.
The actuals, twenty nineteen, it was thirty-two hundred and change, twenty twenty, it was twenty-eight hundred and change, and so far this year, twenty-four hundred and change.
But do we have any information on whether the price isn't going up?
I imagine there probably are.
I presume that they have seen that they are.
Yeah.
I think sticking by the way it sits would be.
Yeah, I mean, uh, it, it, thirty, a thou, taking a thousand out of it, I mean, I have to assume that on these kinds of things, that Chris would make the right assumptions and recommendation?
Yep.
If we, if we just, I mean, I know it's minimal, but if we just dropped it back to three thousand, that would be twenty-five percent above current expenditures to date for this year, I don't think it would be that much, you know what I'm saying? For, of an increase for next year, I don't, I don't see it going up twenty-five percent for next year. I mean, I, I know it's only cutting it two hundred bucks, but still.
I thought it was two hundred dollars, but it's not a.
It's, yeah, it's not gonna, it's gonna, it's not gonna move the rocket Gibraltar, you know?
No.
Leave it or move it, or change it?
I, I, I say leave it, I don't, I don't think we can.
I would leave it.
We can't change that line enough to make a difference.
Good.
Okay, line one fifty-eight.
Semitaries.
So John said, cut it from nine to eight, and Ben said, cut it from nine to seventy-five hundred.
So I actually went as far as cutting it down to seven thousand. Just given the expenses over the past few years, they haven't exceeded seven thousand for the last three years. Is that workable?
Uh, yeah, again, I think it's just one of those areas that we can, we can put the number wherever we want, and it's, if they're gonna need more, they're gonna come back.
They're gonna ask, yeah.
Would Ben want it at?
Ben wants it at seventy-five.
I'll agree with Ben, that's five hundred dollars less than what I asked, I mean.
So a fifteen hundred dollar cut instead of, so, yeah, down to seventy-five?
Yeah.
I can live with that.
Tyler, you good? Good. I didn't have anything under the police department.
Um.
Oh, wait, there was one.
Tyler had one. What do I have?
Actually have one in the insurance section.
Oh, the, the one eighty-six is the, um, the digital sign, which I think pretty much everybody agrees that we can hold off on that, correct me if I'm wrong?
How much is the digital sign?
I don't know if it has equipment, placement for drone, maintenance, e-ticket printers, which I know they need. I just figured if there's one thing, I guess maybe the digital sign can wait.
Yeah, so that can wait, the one problem is that we.
We don't have a specific number for it.
Yeah, we don't have the number, and if I recall correctly, it was split across fire and PD.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you are.
PD that number.
EMS, actually, yeah.
Yep.
There was, the five hundred dollar amount was the EMS share for that, but I don't know if it was an even split. Can we jump back up to insurance for a moment?
Yeah.
Cause I, I got one there, I, I wanna get your opinions on.
You can withdraw that one for now, too, if we get a good more information.
No, I, I, I think we just, I think we all agree that, let's cut it, we just need to get that, we need to get the number. What line are you at?
All right, so if you look at line one sixty-three, it's the, an HMA deductible, so it's the.
Oh, yep.
That we, that we have, you know, it's our share of any claim that has to be paid, and we haven't touched it once in the last three years.
But.
We'd be able to come up with that if we needed to. But like I said, we haven't spent any of that money in the past three years that it was budgeted. Like, we could drop it down to a dollar. But I think that one.
I think that's risky, I think that could end up being one of the lines if we pull stuff out of it if we have to.
Yeah, cause there is, I mean, not, hard to say, but there is a line of fluff we need to keep, just so that in case lines that do go over, we have money from other accounts we can pull into it. But again, that's, again, would I cut that line by fifteen hundred dollars? Sure, if you wanna make that. But like, I mean, I guess, I'm not sure what it's actually a hundred percent for, so I'm a little hesitant on what we do with it, you know, when it comes to any of these, when it comes to insurance.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable making cuts to those without having the input from.
Right, I mean.
Yeah.
They call it insurance for a good reason.
Right, but it's just our deductible pot, and if we need to pay a deductible on a claim, we can certainly come up with three thousand dollars, we've got the money in the bank, you know?
But we're, but we're cutting a lot of other lines.
I know.
Could we cut it in half?
I'd be happy with any change there, really, I mean, it's, it's money that we, we always budget and we never spend.
Tyler, your input on line one sixty-three.
Do it like it is.
We're tied.
Well. If it's gonna be a tie, we're gonna leave it.
No, it, we can leave it.
Okay.
Like I said, it, it is one of those things we would definitely have questions for Chris on, and if it's that uncertain, it's not worth.
You can also leave some stuff for the budget committee.
Question mark.
That, that is one thing, actually, we could get more information on that one.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Betsy can probably give us information on that one.
Yeah, police depart, oh, and what's the?
Oh.
Oh, yeah, the, I did have one other item in the police department, and it was line one seventy-eight for testing. We've been budgeting sixteen hundred bucks, um. We've only spent seven hundred this year.
Yeah, but the year before was twenty-two.
We, yeah, we did go, yeah, over that. So, I don't know, it, it's not a big change, certainly wouldn't hurt to leave it.
It's not, it's not any change, yeah.
No, but I mean, if we take that six hundred out, it's not a big change, it's not gonna move. It's not gonna give us a lot of motion, so I'm, I'm fine with taking that out.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, yeah, the next item I had was the speed sign.
Yeah, everybody's in agreement with that, we just need.
We just don't know what the, yeah. Twenty-two utility drone, e-ticket printers, yeah, we need a number on that.
Two oh six, John wanted to reduce it by a thousand dollars, to cut it down to nine, to nine thousand.
Well, I got, I got more in the police department.
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped, I jumped ahead of line.
Um. Yeah, police department telephone, and that's one eighty-eight. So if you look at the last two years, budgeted thirty-two hundred, spent four hundred and change. Um, and it, the note says that it's included now in town hall, other business, other buildings, community center internet, because they're IP phones now. So, I don't think we need to budget that money, that much anymore. So I, my proposal here was to drop it by twenty-seven hundred, um, down to five hundred dollars. That would cover the expenses that they have been seeing in the past couple of years, since we changed to IP phones.
So that seems to make sense, the only question is, what do we don't know? That Chris was thinking when he left out, what do we know?
That I don't know.
Cause Chris is smart enough to know that it's not included here, there's a reason he left out money here.
Yeah.
Right, and I don't know what that is.
I mean, it could have just been that it wasn't a, a huge dollar amount, I, I don't know.
I think it's one we put on the list and ask Betsy.
Again, I wouldn't mind seeing tw, at least twelve hundred, something should come off it, I'm with you on that.
I mean, would the police department be paying the town full use of the internet, or no? Did I look at, I mean, you look, I mean, it's.
No, it's all a shared service, this whole building has.
Like rec has a number of three hundred. With zero actually spent. For the date, so.
Yeah.
Not comfortable making those decisions.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just question mark with an explanation, that's, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
If you drop it down to a thousand, it would still be funds to cover the kind of expenses they've seen in the last two years.
But I disagree, I, I, I'm not saying that we can't, yeah, get background on why that's happening.
How do we find it?
Cause again.
Well, Chris left a lot of things in there, we're already going through and cutting them down.
Yeah, but we're cutting.
Cause you know, this is his budget that he put out for us to overview and look at, and we're going right now down the line of cutting things. In the past three years of me sitting here, we've always had a surplus.
You guys wanna cut it, all three of you think you wanna cut it since?
And I, I would mind seeing it cut down at least twelve hundred bucks off it. You know, I mean, minimum.
I can wait till the twenty-seventh to, to make up my mind, can I?
We, we, we could start and wait for the twenty-seventh and just make suggestions that, you know, again, on that line item.
What's the pleasure?
Well, again, if we don't, I mean, I wouldn't even mind going to fifteen hundred, I mean, I'm going, I'm working, I'm working. I mean, I can see that being cut almost in half, if you ask me. So I'm not proposing cutting it at all, so that's.
So you're. So reducing it fifteen hundred or dropping it down to fifteen hundred?
Either or, again, I'm, I'm with you on it, I think it's too high, so.
I, I can go along with that.
You know, but we should start just to make sure we know the reason for it.
But yes, but still check with Betsy, cause if there is a reason for that, we'll wanna put it back in.
Right, exactly.
Well, so what's our philosophy on these things with Betsy, are we gonna make the change and validate the change, or are we gonna get the information and then change it? Are we changing it and get the information, or are we getting the information and then changing it?
I say let's, let's change it and then ask Betsy, and then if there's, you know, if she says, you probably don't wanna do that because, you know, yada, yada, then we can restore it.
When we show this to Betsy tomorrow or the next day, again, she really has tomorrow and Thursday to look at it and that's it. She only has two days to check this out after we do this.
So.
So is that we, what I think would be advisable if we ask her is just go through and check the, the items that we listed that we changed, there's only gonna be.
Give her a list.
Right.
Of things we want her to check.
Exactly, and just say, hey, let's just check those items, put this one, we decided we think you change it, is that, do you think, you know, from what your past budget, what you looked at, is that gonna affect it in?
Okay, so the.
Negative way.
The way that I was coming at it was, flag it as something that we wanna change, but let's not make the change, because if we make the change and she says she shouldn't make the change, we're gonna have to go back and say, what was that number?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'd put them all in a separate column, so that way, if we don't wanna make that change, I erase that line.
Alright, okay.
So.
I just think on the twenty-seventh, we come to that meeting, it's being our last meeting of the year, I don't wanna spend, I don't think, a lot of time going back over this, I just wanna go hit the line items that we need.
Yeah.
And move on to the other scheduled business that we have for that night.
Right.
Which we could have quite a bit more.
Right.
Instead of going here and rehashing this all out.
Okey.
That's all I had in the police department. What's next, okay.
Moving on.
So in fire department.
Um, John had two oh-six, he wanted to cut it from ten to nine, then, I don't know what you meant by tough to ask.
Did I write that?
Yep.
Actually.
Oh, I meant tough to, that was more for you guys to say, you know, I hate cutting things from the fire department, but.
Well, me too.
You know, it was more of a, that was more of a, a conversation piece between, since I wasn't gonna be here during that last meeting. You know, it's tough to ask for a cut, to make them, ask them to make a cut, but we're pretty much asking everybody to make a cut somewhere else.
Well, and seriously, if you go by the numbers that you guys go by, then their two thousand twenty was twenty-eight hundred and their two thousand twenty-one was ten thousand and they've only spent five thousand. Now, he's obviously bumping it up to accommodate three new hires.
No, he was still budgeted for ten thousand the last two.
Yeah, but he spent fifty-three.
Well, right, 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 but like he kept his, his ask at ten thousands.
Yeah, but his, his twenty-twenty actual was twenty-eight hundred. And his ask was ten thousand and his twenty-twenty-one actual is fifty-three.
Double, yeah.
So.
And so now he's, you know. I see what you're saying, even though that he's increasing the number of staff, he's in, leaving that ask at ten K.
So. There's a grant.
I, I think dropping it a thousand is a fair, you know. You know, it's just one more, one more cookie out of the jar, you know what I mean?
What are you talking about?
We are on line two oh-six for the fire department. Do you have that? We're just dropping, uh, proposed budget from ten thousand to nine thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, I can go along with that, that's. It won't hamstring training.
Everybody good?
I didn't have anything else in there.
Well, in that particular line item is what I meant. Uh, that was two oh-six, I had something on two eighteen.
Yeah, radio maintenance.
That seems like, uh.
You've got five.
I cut, I cut thirty-five hundred.
Got thirty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Thirty-five hundred?
No, cut it down to two thousand.
How do you know that's the right number?
Just based on expenditures, the last couple of years.
No, I mean, that, that, like, when Chief talked, I mean, that's where, his numbers were the ones where he had the numbers of actually what he's taken out of his budget and there was quite a few lines that he was actually, these, these numbers year to date are way off whack.
Say that, I'm sorry, say that again?
The year to date numbers showing what they've spent, you know, that's what my first thing was saying, well, they only spent that much, why would they need this much, but then when he had his figures the other night. I mean, he was, he was above on some of the, I don't know exactly which ones they were, but he, he was, he had spent abo- above what his, uh, ask was.
So it was throughout that, the whole department?
Yeah. You know, like you said, he thinks that, you know, that maybe the bills just haven't been paid yet, or, I don't know, not sure.
Well, see, I mean, this is gonna sound bad, but I'm used to saying it anyway, so, you know, we need this information, we're here at crutch time. And it, you know, and again, bless the fire department for everything they do and, you know, everything, and again, I'm not criticizing everybody, but, you know, we're stuck in a position here where we have to make decisions now too.
Let me flip that around.
So.
Let me flip it around.
Sure.
Anybody ask Betsy for it?
Like I said, I never even realized until, like I said the other night, when they started and I, you know, was using some of the numbers year to date.
Yep.
They go, no, that's way off the numbers, you know, this or that, and I'm like, oh boy.
Yep.
So.
What did you, so what did you want the total to be?
Hey, I was gonna dropping it five hundred bucks, just to go back to normal, so.
What did you cut it down to?
For radio maintenance?
Yeah.
Um. From fifty-five hundred down to two thousand. But that's assuming the expenditure information is correct, and he only spent a little over a thousand in twenty-twenty. He had a lot of maintenance done in twenty-nineteen.
I think what we should do is like.
How much was expended in two, twenty-nineteen?
Forty-five fifty-nine out of five thousand. But those radios don't need like regular periodic maintenance like a, like a car would, right? I wouldn't think that the radios would need that much again so soon. That's why I felt that we could get away at least this year with dropping that down that much.
So I think we should put in what, what it, you know, what we think the cut should be, and then let's have Betsy validate that entire section.
Assuming those numbers are correct, are we comfortable with thirty-five hundred cut, drop it down to two thousand?
I'd be more comfortable cutting it, if we're gonna cut to the exact, you know, cut it to thirty-five hundred at the most.
So drop it two thousand and.
Yeah, but I mean, again, I was initially proposing five hundred just to break it even, so that, that line item change went to zero.
No, I'm okay with that.
That's what I was looking, just a, a, a zero change in item, just keeping it the way it was.
So put it at thirty-five hundred?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
With an asterisk.
Yeah, to ask Betsy. Yeah.
Again, I will have time on Thursday morning if I need to, to see the fire department or see anybody ask questions, I'm off on Thursday morning, so. I don't have plans for the afternoon, so if anything needs to be done.
Yep.
I don't mind coming in to even have to sit with Betsy or go over with her, if she wants to, I can do that on Thursday, just to point that out, if that helps out with any of these.
Yep. Good.
Uh, so that was line two eighteen.
Yeah, I lost my place, I gotta get back.
Did you have anything for two fifty-four, Tony?
Uh, yeah, actually, on. Two seventeen hydrant maintenance, um, I wanted to drop that down to fifteen hundred from two thousand. Cause if you look at the expenditures, it, it's like, it's like every other year.
Yeah, that, that, that's one of the ones I know for sure, it's worth way more than, uh, year to date fifty-one dollars. That's all, I'd love to, you know, you know, to get one that has the actual, you know, most recent year.
Yeah. What?
We haven't decided.
We haven't dr- decided anything, I ju- I suggested dropping it five hundred bucks, but.
Yeah, I mean, we.
If the actuals are much higher than.
But again, if we put it, what we wanna put it at and then say, Betsy, here's what we wanna put it at, but can you validate that against, can we get real year to date actuals? So you wanna put it at fifteen hundred?
Yeah, I mean, it's a small change and it won't prevent any, it won't prevent all hydrant maintenance, it, it'll just be a little bit less than anything. Uh, and then, let's see. Oh, and also I had. Two fifteen vehicle maintenance. Wanted to drop that fifteen to thirteen thousand. But now that I, you know, now that I know these actuals aren't correct, I'm kinda rethinking that.
Twenty-twenty it was one.
Be thirteen, you know, if the, if the costs are consistent, thirteen would still be enough.
Well, can we make it fourteen?
Cause like what, what we're ended up with here is rather than bigger cuts on a few lines, we're making smaller cuts across multiple lines. Either way, we, we're getting closer to our goal without really impacting, so.
We don't really have.
Well.
We don't, I mean, other than.
Our, our goal.
Other than get lower than ten.
Right, our, our goal of getting to a percentage where we all go, okay, I can live with that. See, I'm, I'm.
I wouldn't mind that going to fourteen from fifteen.
I, yeah, and I can live with that.
Okay, so I change that.
That's two fifteen, right?
Yep.
Uh, that's all I had is. Actually, the, one other that I didn't see. The forest fire.
Yeah, so we had a discussion on that when he was here. Yeah, cause I asked, I asked what the heck that was. Um, that was due to the fact that the forest fires that go like in the state park, if they need it or the town forest. Um, a certain amount of money that he has to have or whatever they. Right, right, it's, right, right, that's a.
So it's dependent on whether there's a fire or not.
Right.
Last three years, they've only spent two eighty-four, two ninety, and.
And that's because he said they haven't had a fire.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's kind of like the insurance money figured out, right?
Yeah, yeah, so it's gotta be there if you need it.
Right.
Alright, yeah, we can leave that. Building inspector, are we all done with fire rescue?
Do you have some fire rescue?
Okay. Building inspector, I had nothing there. Emergency management, so the only thing I pulled out of there was the five hundred dollar increase. Where it's, you know, for fifty percent cost share for.
What number was that?
Uh, I'm sorry, two forty-seven.
We don't go like.
Well, it, it does say fifty percent cost share for electronic sign, so it's half, whatever that number is, it's half. Nixel subscription is only seven hundred, so. Seems a little light for an electronic sign building.
A thousand dollars?
A thousand dollars, yeah.
It's maybe more than that.
But, that was my, my thought was just to take, take away that five hundred dollar increase.
I don't think we should do it.
Well, I mean, okay, if he did it right, if he budgeted to, so if it's five sixty, let's just make that six hundred, yeah, the, they're saying the sign's twelve hundred dollars. Well, if he's averaging that, you know, he budgeted seven hundred dollars the year before, but he's only spending five sixty-two, then he only spent five sixty-two again, so we know that Nixel subscription is five sixty-two, right?
Yeah, no, that, that makes sense.
So let's call it six hundred dollars.
Not from last year to this year.
That's why I'm just saying that sign's twelve hundred dollars, now that seems, again, I never priced out of.
So let's put it this way.
The twelve hundred dollars does seem like it's less, unless, unless.
If Nixel goes up ten percent, for example, right, that's gonna be six hundred and fifteen dollars. So if we take away this five hundred dollar increase, it'll be the seven hundred dollars that was originally there, which is enough to pay for Nixel.
Right, and this is.
So then, are we gonna take that assumption and go back to the other line where it was and take that same amount out?
We could, but we really need real confirmation on that.
Okay, so then we need it real confirmation here too.
You think so?
Well, yeah, cause if we can't confirm that number, if we can confirm it here, then we can confirm it in the other line, cause it's fifty fifty, right?
Yeah, but it still doesn't seem right, though.
No, the sign's gonna be more than twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah, yeah, more one they tow behind, that has a computer system in it, that can read it, that can change all the things and.
Yeah.
I think it's solar power, isn't it?
Sure, that must be.
I, I, yeah, I thought it was one of those signs that goes on the flagboard, I mean, the, the.
Trailer, they haul it.
Yeah, I thought it was the trailer one that she mentioned that.
Move it from place to place.
Yeah.
Right, catch you speeding in front of here, in front of the school.
Well, assuming that the, the increase is for the sign, I mean, we can still just leave that five hundred dollar cut there and put the ask Betsy next to it. And that'll answer the question for both this and other line up in.
So you're gonna make change here, but not on the previous line?
Well, the previous line, we're asking how much it costs, so we know what to cut.
We, we do have an add.
Same thing, if you're making an assumption here, then you're making an assumption on the previous line.
Cause I, cause I put ask Betsy next to that as well.
So, so I'm unclear, we're cutting five hundred from here, but we're leaving it in the other line? So that's why I'm saying, let's just leave it here and let's find out from Betsy what the real number is.
When you finish this, could you email me what you have over, another thing, so, okay, maybe Thursday or whatever like that, I can have what you have too for your suggestions, cause you're going way more detail, which is great. So we'll leave that as two forty-seven with the note that, you know, we do think about cutting it to five hundred, but.
Yeah.
Just to be fair, we need to know how much we're cutting off the, the police department's line item on that.
Yeah, I'm gonna erase the number that I have.
Yeah, just leave it as is, but.
In the cut column, but I put ask Betsy next to it.
Right.
As a, as a bookmark. Alright, is that it for emergency management? Everything else in there is either like, it's a dollar.
Yeah.
Or, or it's zero increase, so.
Yep.
Okay. Alright.
So the.
So under highway, I had put down, I had marked to preserve that shared position, right?
I think we, I think, I say we cut it.
Right, but remember, we're gonna, we're gonna do the same analysis in both spreadsheets, so we can.
No, I, I think it's separate, I, yeah, leave the fire. Yeah, leave the fire discussion out of it for now. Oh, Betsy, I'm sorry, both, um, Courtney and Sean said that they could do without that position. So we treat that one separately, we cut that. Ben put that down, and Tyler put that down as well.
So that was just my feeling on it, but there's no number associated with it.
Well, it's rolled up from that second spreadsheet.
It is, from the other sheet.
From the other sheet, which rolls up into all the benefits and everything like that.
Right, right.
So, and you have.
So when we add all these changes that we're agreeing on tonight, when we apply those to the other sheet, we're gonna see, you know.
You have to go into the, to the second tab within that worksheet. Change the personnel numbers.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And if you change the personnel numbers, and I can show you where, then that goes, calculates all the insurance fields and everything like that.
On the, on the first tab.
On the first tab.
Gotcha, okay.
But regardless of that other sheet, I think we cut this position. Tyler, apparently you flagged that, and Ben has flagged that.
Yeah, they, they did say they could live without it for another year, so.
Cut it.
I mean.
So we'll cut that fifty out of there.
Out of.
Line two fifty-four.
So you don't cut?
Oh, I was at the, sorry, not the budget, sorry.
What do you have for total in that? The two, the twenty twenty-two proposed budget for that, two fifty-four, Tony?
Three thirteen.
So we would have to go in to the other spreadsheet. To the other tab. It's line six in the second tab.
Line six. Yeah, my stupid track down is stupid. Oh, okay.
So, I mean, we can do that afterwards.
Well, that's the health insurance block.
Oh, that's health insurance, and then.
It's payroll lines that we wanna.
Yeah, it's line.
Yeah, cool, thanks.
I can use my fingers, you're doing more than.
Oh, I don't have a traditional USB port.
Oh, you.
I have the little USB C ones, and there's a, an adapter that goes in it, and I left the adapter. I, I have a mouse in my pocket, I can't use it.
Sorry, then.
Thanks, though.
So. Don't remember how we do it out of the. It's gotta be in line forty-one.
Your salary full-time.
Get how you change it.
Yeah. We look at the other sheet that has that position out. Be thirteen. Or we could look at the personnel admin entries on the other document. Just to know where that differs. You can check with Betsy and make sure.
Well, we are a consensus that on line two fifty-four, we will cut the, uh.
Yeah. Other thing I marked is. My two fifty-seven, that's, uh, you know. Other, like, this past year, they could go around town, cut it down. Two items, two sixty-five and two sixty-six.
I had a mark on two sixty. I, I heard equipment truck, well. You know, I know we had the plan of having the other guy do the road grading service, but that was. I know we used them, but I don't think we use them as much as we talk to them or use them.
Yeah, but remember too, the, the, the rationale behind contract out.
But, yeah, again, that, that's, like, like I'm saying, he didn't contract out. Even this year. I don't think he's gonna spend twenty-five thousand dollars.
Uh, which line is this?
We're on two sixty.
Does it plow as well?
No.
Phil, is that for plowing? Does that include plowing?
Note only says, road grading services, comma, equipment rental.
Yeah, the line I had right up, the line two fifty-eight is the hired equipment for plowing, contract service for snow plowing. This is just the hired equipment for construction. That's called the road grader. And I remember two years ago, we had the conversation about the road grader, keeping ours just, uh, the older one we have now to do some of the smaller town roads. And then we're gonna hire this guy out, he was giving us the great rate, and we were supposed to do all that. But did we?
He did the non-lake roads. He did the non-like, like roads.
Right.
So here's my little question. Does, it says grading services, comma, equipment rental. Let's not, I don't believe that as just grading services.
Oh, I understand. So, alright, other equipment that they need.
But still, regardless, he hasn't come close to spending that yet. So like, we could drop that by a third, drop it to twenty-five thousand. And that's still enough to accommodate the expenses for twenty twenty, twenty nineteen. You look at the actuals, right?
Cause I had a drop on that one.
You brought it to thirty.
Right.
I say drop it to twenty-five.
So, one thing I'm uncomfortable with is making these random cuts based on assumptions.
I, I know, it's, it's.
So.
It, it is, there's a lot of blind, you know, we're fumbling in the dark in a lot of this.
Right, so I'm okay with that, but what I think we need to do is to get these back to the department heads and say, here's what we want to do. Tell me if you have any concerns about this. So, so I'm okay, we can put whatever number we want there, but we need to trickle back with the department heads. That's all.
No, I could, I could, I could live with that seven thousand, i- if Sean agrees to it. If he says, yeah, we could get away with that, that would be.
Well.
You know, drop it down to thirty.
When we talk about rental equipment. For rental equipment, we have a full Bobcat, I know, we have, I mean, we have. We have equipment in town. What are we really renting that he's gonna need? I mean, I'm sure there's certain items, but.
I don't, I don't know.
Just seems like a lot of money for something that we have our.
Yeah, I look the other way. I don't know, so I don't know what I'm missing. Right, that's kind of the way I look at it. So, I, I'm fine, we can put it at whatever you want, we can put it at ten thousand dollars, but let's just go back to Sean and say. Where, where would this put you at risk?
Yeah, I mean, it's. The, the smartest thing to do, if we're gonna cut it all, we, we make it, we. Try to find an amount that is significant enough to help us move the total budget line, but not hamstring that line item. So, I think that seven thousand dollar cut is fair, but we'll just, we'll run it by Sean.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I can go like that.
Good.
What were you cutting it by?
Cause normally we'd have Chris here, right?
Cut it by seven.
Sure.
Normally we'd have Chris, and Chris would be like, yeah, that'll fly or no, that won't fly.
Uh, next to, yeah, two sixty-five and two sixty-six, I marked them red as in don't touch them, simply because.
Okay, well.
Huh?
I had a two sixty-six. That was only three thousand dollars is what I marked off of, but.
Yeah, but just that, you know, the, we, we've got the new roads, they're gonna need gravel, not sand, and then, you know, salt has gone up, um.
Gravel's separate, though.
Yeah, it is, I'm talking the both lines, two sixty-five and six, I, I didn't really want. To cut those, simply because we gotta make sure that he has. That that department has what they need to take care of, you know, all the roads, including the new roads this winter, you know.
Again, I.
And gravel for repairs.
That's one of those lines, we can put it at whatever we want, but he, it's something he has to have, so if we cut it too low, he's gonna come back and say, hey, I have to have it, and we're gonna have to find it from someplace else.
Right, well, I made a small cut, I only asked for three grand.
I, I'm, I'm fine with that.
And my only problem is too. Lots of things have gone up or whatever, but how do we know for sure? I mean, it's, where, and where are we getting the pricing from? Is it just from somebody, the one vendor that we use? Are we putting it out there saying, hey, you know what? We're looking for this much salt, this much gravel, are we getting the best bang for our buck?
We don't know what the season's gonna entail either, for how much he's gonna actually.
No, that's what I mean, and you like, he did, I mentioned too, that, you know, like the salt, it can't be left out where it gets, you know, weathered or anything like that, so I don't know if they bring in so much, and we may not need. Half of it maybe, and then we won't have to pay for it, but, and he won't take it all at once.
Yeah, the, the, the big. The, the monkey wrench here is that we can't predict what the weather's gonna be like.
Yep.
For the season ahead, so we just don't know.
Yeah, I mean, tomorrow, they could be salted.
Right, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, we could get three feet of snow this weekend, or we, you know, we may be suntanning in February, who knows?
So, I mean, I, I don't have a problem cutting a three and putting it in one. Um, that is one of the lines that Chris suggested, that we go back and double-check the year-end total, cause it's at fifty-nine right now. And I don't know, I don't, I guess this was the November seventh as of date or something like that, so.
Uh, December seventh.
Was it December, so.
Yeah, so it was just two weeks ago.
It hasn't changed much, but. I'm fine with putting it at a hundred.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Salt, the salt line, just, just dropping it from one oh-three to one hundred. Yeah, I, I'm totally okay with that. Uh, the only other thing I had in highway was engineering consulting.
Yeah.
Didn't really wanna touch that, because he's gonna need in, you know, they're gonna need engineering support in assessing the lake roads, you know, um.
Well, John wanted to cut it, and so did Tyler.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I, all I wanna find out is, again, with some of these funds that are available, and said engineering was in there as one of the things you could use, if, I'd love to find out how much money we could actually. Could be used on any of that.
You mean the ARPA money?
Yeah.
That's true, I mean, that was one of the allowed.
Road, bridges, water, engineering.
We just don't know how much.
Yeah, that's what I mean, if we could get a, somehow get some sort of guidance on that.
So how are you gonna get that, Tyler?
I don't know. I mean, that's what I'm saying, if, if this money is out there, our department heads that are, are doing these types of work, they should actually have an idea as well. I mean, like, all the construction right now of the water on Route Four is all being paid out of these funds.
Out of ARPA money?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they're putting water everywhere there now.
Are you talking like Durham and Lee?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're connecting their water systems, right?
Yep. So, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I guess I could make some phone calls, see if I get an answer from somebody at the state, but. I just wanna, it'd be nice to know what we could spend, and I think every penny that we could spend, we should spend, spend, uh, you know, that money is gonna, is allotted for us, you know?
So I, I, I think. Again, I go back to, Chris knows all of this, right?
Yep.
And, you know, potentially, you know, maybe there is a case where we can use some money for that. And, but we budget for it, and then if we can use that money, that's all good.
Yeah, that's what I mean, I hope it is, it's a.
And then we end up not expending it out of our budget, yeah.
Yep.
So.
Well, I was only reflecting a five thousand dollar decrease in that number. But that's, you know, cause.
That's fine, I don't care about that.
You know, I wasn't taking a huge number off it, but again, when I was looking through.
No, it's, it's a fair amount, I, I, I think that's fair.
Off two seventy-one, we'll take off five grand.
But, but I mean, again, it's kind of like. I think we have to have Sean leave this whole section.
Yeah, but again, I mean, that's. And I wanted to say this and point this out here, that right there, what he wrote in his notes, increase new, newly, increase reflects newly required roads around the lake. And adju- engineering cost to environment, so this. We don't need any of those roads, all the roads done around the lake, it's a piece deal for over the next quite a few years.
I'm sure.
Yeah, and I, I don't think it, um, I don't think it relates to any desire to pave, cause there's also like drainage.
No, not paving, there's nothing to pave.
Yeah, not paving at all, but like, engineering the drainage to make sure, like, uh, what, uh, Highland, was that where they had the drainage issue?
Yeah.
You know, engineering support for that, to make sure that we're not contaminating the lake, or, you know what I mean, there's this lot of. And the, like, where those cars are buried under the road.
Sacks.
You know what I mean, sacks, you know, I mean, there's plenty of places where you could use.
But again, it's, I wanna see that, that, again, when I see this here, I wanna see that spread out over the next twenty years.
Yeah, but he, twenty thousand wouldn't cover all of that anyway.
No, I know, but again.
So he's making an assumption that, you know, it is gonna be spread out. Don't stay?
Well, I, I hope that he addresses the situations as they come, as problems.
Well, I would sue him.
Go look for the problems, but to address problems as they, they come up, and not as to. But again, that's something we can discuss, you know, that for future. If we're good at tw- making it twenty thousand instead of twenty-five, good to roll along with that. I think we already said this.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Moving on.
I mean, we'll certainly double-check with Sean, but I think. It, it's not, it's not hamstringing that line item, so. He'll still have the ability to do what? Excuse me. Let's see, let's see, two seventy-six, that's the, oh yeah, Schimman Seelko, we're not, we're not touching that. Okay, recycling center. I didn't have anything there, I, uh, two eighty-one, I figured we'd probably wanna leave that alone, because.
I had a line out of two eighty, reducing that to eighteen to fifteen, just give me a second to go back and look at that.
Those, yeah, you know.
Well, I guess, cause we had a big year in twenty twenty for testing. But.
Everybody that works there has to have some certification class in solid waste disposal and recycling. So, you know, I. There's been a lot of rotation this year, right, a lot of turnover this past year, so are those people trained yet? Was that reflected in the year-to-date? I'll check on that. But if the people we have are fully trained. Good for the next year.
If they stay with us.
Yeah, if they stay with us.
Here's your big kicker.
Yeah.
Catcher of the, uh.
Yep.
It's a, it's a discussion, not actually a proposal, yeah, I think we're, how we're doing things tonight is we're discussing optional cuts, and what we make as suggestions. Again, if you think we should stand with it, then fine, we'll stay with it, again.
It was twenty-one in, um.
But I don't know what happened in twenty, what happened in two thousand nineteen? Do you have that number? I don't have it.
Uh, that was, uh, twenty nineteen, the, the columns are just hidden, so I don't hit them. Um, so testing, it was budgeted for sixteen thousand, and they spent eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty. And it was increased to eighteen thousand for twenty twenty, and they spent twenty-one and change. This year, budgeted for eighteen again, and only spent sixty-five hundred and change so far.
So maybe that's a safe number to keep it at, then.
Keep it at eighteen?
I mean, it's, it's, it's fair. I was thinking maybe dropping it down to fifteen, but that would put us below twenty-nineteen's budget. You know, it depends on the turnover situation, I guess.
Well, that's what I had, I had more than eighteen to fifteen, that was my suggestion, but.
We could certainly ask Sean, if he thinks that we can get away with that.
Well, for number-wise here, you wanna leave it at eighteen, move it.
But if we do cut it, let's check with Sean. What do you think, Sean?
Yeah, I'm good with cutting it to fifteen.
Uh.
And John, you wanted to change on.
Think they have more than disposal fees.
Yeah, I was seeing the number, I don't know if it needed to go up that much, from what we spent over the years, I mean.
As of two weeks ago, it was one eighty-three, cause it went up a lot this year.
Right, and I was only asking to bring it down to, what, one ninety, right? Five grand?
Might cut it root, like, right to the wire with year-end, for this year, you know, year-end actuals.
Okay, leave it alone.
There, fresh memory, but were they talking about getting another baler this year, or was that?
No, that was a brief conversation I had a while ago about a baler. They were all functioning, but one was getting, that would've been more for a, um, a CIP line item.
Yeah.
Uh.
Two ninety-two.
Wait, two, two seventy-nine. Ben was suggesting to cut them over by a hundred dollars. I don't know what that.
So, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, we budgeted a thousand both years, spent nine hundred both years. This year-to-date, we budgeted a thousand, only spent four fifty, assuming the actuals are correct. So, you know, it's, it's a fair, it's a fair move, I mean, it's only a hundred bucks.
I, I say we do it a thousand.
Back to that, uh, that showing movement from the fifteenth. Sean might've told the budget committee he was looking for a new baler.
Where was that?
Solid waste disposal, two eighty-nine is the equivalent line.
Nine.
He's, he's not gonna get a baler for five hundred bucks.
No doubt.
I'll check with him, he, he may be intending it for the CIP plan.
I think we leave low where it is.
Hundred bucks isn't enough to move it. That's all I had for recycling.
Um, Ben wants to cut supplies, equipment, and stickers from twenty-one to fifteen. Which, actual, two thousand twenty was forty-five. Two thousand twenty-one so far is fourteen hundred.
Twenty nineteen, it was nineteen hundred and eighty-three, that number's all over the place.
I don't agree with the cut, though.
Unpopular statement.
What's that?
Sorry, I was just gonna say something, but, so, you know, we charge twenty dollars a year for everybody, we don't have to worry about that.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think that line historically is too erratic to.
And I, I think six hundred dollars is too steep of a cut. But we don't really know, right?
Have anything in animal control?
Nope.
Nothing in general assistance.
General assistance, um.
Uh, wait. So, we're done animal control?
Yeah.
Yeah.
General assistance, nobody had anything there?
Nope.
Well, yeah, actually, it did, um. Uh, I'm not, I'm not married to this idea, but three oh seven, the.
Yeah, I was looking at that same thing.
Rec department, summer scholarships, you know. Erase it entirely, cut it in half, cut it back a thousand, I don't, I don't care.
I, I don't agree, I say we leave it.
Why is it under animal control, though? No, it isn't, it's under general, the, the, animal control, you look upward, but.
It's line three oh seven.
Yeah, okay.
I disagree, I think it's something new that they're trying to do, and I think it's, uh, help the kids in town.
For.
Be able to go to summer camp, the rec department's summer camp, direct aid to families in town.
So, yeah, the, I mean, it is new for twenty twenty-one, and they spent fifty-three hundred this year.
Well, if you're giving away free money, of course, everybody's gonna use it. So, if they don't spend, sorry, it sounds terrible to say, but you go look at the next items when we go down under the, uh, under social services, every, every little bit of line item there is spent every single year. So, and no matter what number we make that miscellaneous there, if we made it ten thousand, they would find ten thousand dollars to be spent. So, that's the number where, you know, that's a number where it's always gonna be, whatever number we put, it's always gonna be spent. So, whether we wanna keep that number at five grand, or put it down to thirty-five hundred dollars and save ourselves fifteen hundred and see where it goes.
I just wonder, is that something that we did? I mean, I don't remember.
Yeah, it is.
Was it, but the budget, budget was a dollar, so.
I, I just, I think that this is, I think the rec department does such a good job, and that they're running such good programs, and they're doing so many good things for the community, that what they're really trying to do here is help the families out. And I, I think this is a area where shouldn't be scrudges in this area, let them, let them try the program, let them see how it goes.
Yeah, and we, and we don't know what's gonna happen with COVID this winter, this spring. You know, I mean, if things flare up again before the summer, that money may never be spent anyways, so. Yeah, I mean, and if, if that's the direction it goes, there's no harm in leaving that money there. She ends up not spending it, it doesn't get spent, it'll get returned at the end of the year.
I just look at, if I look at all of our other ones, they'd never move. Fuel assistance, food assistance, zero, hundred bucks. Hundred dollars, hundred dollars for food assistance, if any, I don't know, I know we have the pantry or whatever, that they do a great job, but.
Yes, this is helping people in the community.
Oh, I know, I was saying, but if we're doing a rec scholarship, you would think they might be more allotted for some of these other things, which I guess we could, if some of them are budgeted for a dollar.
A lot of these, those numbers that you see there are based on asks from a specific organization.
Yeah.
That's where those numbers come from.
We're talking the numbers from three hundred to three oh seven, tho- all those numbers.
No.
That's where we're.
Well, I was down.
That's where we're, what he's talking about is from three hundred to three oh seven, you look at actual money spent, and you look at budgeted zero, budgeted, actual money two to four, I mean, there's a lot of money sitting right there, that they're budgeting, that's just, they're not expenditure, there's no, they're not spending. Under all those other assistance programs.
Well, I mean, there are cuts here, like mortgage and rent assistance is, the proposal for this year is to cut it five hundred. Utilities assistance, cut it five hundred. Fuel assistance stays the same, food assistance stays the same.
I question whether or not there is, if the, if the year-to-dates are actually up to date.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about, I don't, I don't think that they are.
Yeah.
The numbers are way off, I mean, well, they should have something spent in those categories. You can't be three quarters through the year and have nothing spent on it, unless it's a one-time check we're giving out to one, I mean, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I, I don't think this is regular budgetary support for families, I think it's just like, somebody gets in a bind and they're like, hey, I can't make my mortgage this month, and I don't wanna lose my house, can I get a little help? You know, I think it's like that kinda thing.
Maybe there was, there was no ask, that's why it stays the same, I guess.
So, you guys ready, wanna leave it?
Leave it, yeah.
Leave it?
Leave it. Like I said, I wasn't married to the idea, but I was looking for something to cut.
Gotta have some compassion, guys.
Yeah.
I got the, I, I, if we go through all this stuff, all the stuff, the services for the people in town, I got no problem. I got a problem, there's big-ticket items coming up, and if, whether they be war and harvests or whatever, I don't support some of them, I'll get to that after, but we will be moving on, any of the stuff that goes for the, the people, I'm all for it.
Social services, did anybody have anything there?
Well.
I wonder how many of them, like, if, you know, remember Christmas tunnels last year, a lot of times they never claim their check.
Right.
You know, and, you know, and if that's the case, uh, you know, start beating out the ones that don't need our money bad enough, and don't even come for it.
I don't understand Ben's comment on this, he said.
Which one?
Uh, line twenty twenty-seven, social services, reduce one year, twenty-five thousand to ten thousand. But he's not suggesting.
Yeah, we, we.
I think he's just, I was walking down saying, the healthcare service here goes from forty-five to five hundred dollars, or, forty-five to five, this goes to eight hundred, seven hundred, or whatever.
He didn't give us that, so.
No, he didn't, but I'm, I, that's why, I'm projecting, that's why he's, oh. Which line was that on?
He, well, he, he, he did, he put it on the total.
He was just suggesting cutting the total for social services from twenty-five thousand to ten thousand. But, um, we'd have to figure out how to reallocate all that.
You know, there is thirty-five thousand dollars for thirty-six thousand dollars. Programs, one of four million dollars.
Five thousand point.
Thirty-five thousand dollars.
And thirty-five from.
Cutting up general assistance and social.
Oh, okay, you're right, I'm sorry, I would.
Yeah, divide that into.
I'm sorry, you need to be a little more clear, cause I was still looking at three twenty-seven, and I was like, where are you finding that number from?
You divide that into the total budget, and you get what, point one? It's small, man.
That's, that's my point, it's thirty-five thousand dollars. If we have money, we can help families out by.
No, but I mean, it's, it's a good point, it's, it's a small, you know. It's a small ask for the people that need it the most.
I'd rather have it here.
Have it and not need it.
The next one I had was two thousand and four. Yeah, John, you wanted, you wanted us to cut a thousand, and Ben wants to cut it from, Ben wants to cut thirty-five hundred.
So, that one, three thirty-three and three thirty-four, I kinda marked, like, my preference is to not catch them, uh, not a hundred percent solid on that, but my feeling there is like, remember what I was saying at like our last meeting or the one before, it's like, the, the town has wanted all these new things, they wanted Marston, we got Marston, we've been building up Marston, now, you know, it's time. It's like a puppy, right? It requires care and feeding, right? We got Marston now. Cost of doing business to keep Marston, take care of it.
Yeah, I, I, I agree.
You know, and porta-potties for Marston, cause you don't want people going in the woods.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
Um, signage and trail maintenance, well, intentionally designed Marston to include trails in the woods, for people to go and walk safely, get their exercise, get fresh air.
Yep.
See the pretty trees, you know, thi- this is all the cost of doing business for Marston.
Yep, and there's been so much done at Marston that the town hasn't paid.
The, the volunteers, the fundraising, the, you know. I, you know, I, I just, I, I think that's our fair share of.
That was kinda your grant, so.
Yeah.
I mean, a grand wouldn't hurt, it wouldn't hamstring anything, so.
I wasn't, I wasn't trying to break anybody's bank on this, I was just trying to type people's numbers on what they do.
That's, you know, you wanna cut three thirty-four by a thousand, fine, cutting it by thirty-five hundred, no.
Right, well, that's again.
Which line were you talking about, John?
I was talking about three thirty-four.
Three thirty-four. And you're talking about cutting that a thousand? Is that what you're saying? Cut it back by a thousand?
Yeah. Cause you know why, when I read, what brought this up is when I read it, when it says, we will also use this line to purchase tools and equipment for trails and community cleanups. We also need funds to purchase outdoor signage, I'd like to know what tools she needs, because there's, I mean, if she's looking for shovels, if she's looking for rakes, if she's looking for stuff like this, those are, again, I just think there's, there's a way to cut a thousand bucks, I just, you know, I mean, trash cans, I know we could use new picker tables, but that's gonna be something that's, maybe somebody'll make one and donate it to the thing.
The Boy Scouts can cut down some trees and make log tables.
Again, that's why when I saw the, the, when I was, when I was looking at this and asking why I'm making, asking this, one thousand dollars, is I find out of all the items she listed online, the three thirty-four, there's a way she could find a thousand dollars worth of that stuff somewhere else.
So, I don't have a problem.
That's where my, my thought process is coming into.
I do think people overestimate what can be done and how much time it takes, right? So, not, not the best example, but, um, if Courtney needs rakes, do you want her to spend her time running around town trying to see who will donate rakes?
Yeah.
The idea of using, um, Boy Scouts and the community service hours from Co-Brown, everybody loves to throw those out, but they work out like one out of ten times, you know?
Well, who's using these rakes? Courtney and who?
There was a really big cleanup that was done up there.
But when people do the cleanups, don't they bring their own rigs?
I didn't.
You didn't?
No.
A lot did, right?
Some probably did, so I don't have a problem with a thousand dollars.
I mean, I would if I, if I could have been.
If I was going out about rakes and shovels and stuff, my little, put my axe or whatever like this and travel with a little workshop.
I don't have a problem cutting a thousand dollars out of.
Tyler?
Finally, the last time I looked, I mean, if someone goes into that, the shed over here by the ball field, that thing has a load of the rigs, shovels.
Here? Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so I mean, we're making the assumption that it's rakes and shovels, we don't.
Yeah, no, it could be something, yeah, I understand. But we're all considered that we take a thousand bucks off that number.
Yeah.
Okay, good, move, move on from the thousand bucks.
And it's, it's gonna grow next year, you know what I mean, so, you know, the grand scheme of things, is it really gonna? It's not gonna hamstring.
No.
The, the ability to get equipment for Marston, we could take a, a thousand out of three thirty-three, the maintenance and mowing, it's not gonna hamstring that either.
No. But again, we're just trying to make sure.
You okay with that?
Oh, yeah, totally.
Yeah, absolutely.
Like that, alright.
Yeah.
What are we doing?
It's a small cut, but it, it.
It's a cut.
Yeah, it's, it's another.
When we go through to the Budget Committee, when we sit there, we can actually tell every one of them that we did this, we did this, we did this, we did this.
Actually, yeah, we can actually preserve this column, we can demonstrate on this line, we cut this.
So, look what we did.
Can you tell, Tony, what our, uh, total cut is so far?
Yep, let me go to the bottom. That's why I love Excel, and I think we've actually exceeded what I, my original proposal, so. So far, and this is not counting that, the shared position being taken out, 'cause I don't have a way to do that yet mathematically, but so far. Well, I've got all my other stuff that we haven't got to yet, but the total cut to this point is, uh, just shy of a hundred and seventy thousand, and that gets the increase down to six point two percent. Which is low.
We didn't cut a hundred and seventy thousand like going through these line items.
What's that?
Doesn't seem like that much.
You sure that's right?
Well, there, there are things that I have that we haven't reviewed yet.
They must be big.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you know, the, the biggest ones are down towards the end in debt service, and we'll talk about that there, but, you know, when you consider, like, if we pay off Mulligan and pay off the fire station out of.
Oh, right.
Right, and that eliminates those big payments and the interest for those payments for this budget year, those are huge. Right? And then there's also the landfill.
That's where I was getting, right, 'cause I was seeing the same numbers, now I know where you're coming up and why that, that thing is so.
Yeah, yeah. And then the landfill, I don't know what we own the landfill, but that's one of those Ask Betsy questions.
Okay.
If the, if the, uh, the balance of the landfill is close enough for us to pay off too, we may wanna consider biting the bullet. Using fund balance for that too, to knock down this.
So before we move on to that, let's get there, one sec, let's just finish since we're close. We wanna talk about line three thirty-nine, we know we're taking that off.
Yes, yep.
So that becomes zero, right?
No, it, it.
Five hundred bucks.
Five hundred? Yeah, we're all in agreement with that.
No, was.
Well, we took seven thousand dollars off.
Eight thousand, it drops it down to a thousand.
Thousand bucks, right.
Yeah.
Okay. And wreck equipment, maybe they can buy some rigs, I'm just kidding. Alright, uh.
Uh, Tyler, you had.
Library, anybody for anything?
Well, Tyler had three forty-four.
Yeah, I just wanna, I just want an explanation on that, on the. You have one, one full-time person at the library now and one part-time? And is the full-time?
One, one full-time and the rest are part-time.
Well, you guys presented on that previously, you were explaining turning that one part-timer into a full-timer so that you can maintain.
Because we've had a lot of issues with turnover.
Turnover, yeah.
And we have, of the remaining part-time employees, some of them cobbled together two part-time jobs.
Right.
For our full-time, and so they're not flexible, we can't call them in, um, so we're at the bare minimum. We added more hours on to that one part-time, it would be dedicated to the library, it would give us that flexibility to. Pay hours, does that make?
Yep.
Sense, yeah.
We've had, we've struggled to keep people, one of the reasons that our miscellaneous line is higher is because we were paying for background checks. Over and over again, it's, it's crazy. A full staff for two weeks.
Who do you go through for background checks?
We go through the state police.
Why not? Use our police department? Do they offer that?
I think, I think it's a work. They have to do a, a background check for, uh, I don't know, we've just always, we get a form from the state. We send it, a twenty-five dollar check to the state, and then they do a very detailed background check.
Does our department do background checks?
Well, I, a local police department can do that, like at UNH, the UNH police does that for the university, and they're a local police department like any other.
They put a separate jurisdiction on it.
They, they share it with the town of Durham, and it's all mapped out, who covers what parts of town, they have a very, very, um.
But the university as an institution might do it versus towns having to go through the state.
If we can keep money in town, certainly definitely.
Yeah, I don't know, I was just, I was just curious, 'cause if, if it is an option. It might save you some aggravation.
Something to be asked.
Yeah.
Doesn't it hurt if you ask Vaughn, uh, chief, when you get a chance to see if they, again, I don't know what her time, the schedule, 'cause you know, a lot of times we only have one officer on. So he doesn't have time to be doing background checks when he's doing other things, it's not like we have the spare, so it might be the reason why you might be using the state, but that's okay.
So Tyler, you were asking for about a five thousand.
Yeah, my, my question was just, in, in the note, actually, on the line, saying if not approved, budget line would drop down to, you know, uh, one, three, two, one, one, two, nine, I mean, I don't know what.
So that's his salary, the salary, what, what was, I think, on that line, was he budgeted for a couple of hours? That would take him to. Not proved, if he's dropped down to thirty-one and a half. That's what she was trying to say.
Yeah, she's saying that, yeah, if he goes to full-time, it's an additional twelve thousand, if he goes to the extra six hours a week, it brings it up twelve thousand dollars.
You okay, Tyler?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, does, does number, the, does that include benefits?
Yeah, it's reasonable, we came with. Um, I would assume that Chris factored that in. We go back up to. Back up to, to, like, budget line item two eighty-two. He's suggesting that we could cut that to eighteen hundred. That's a thousand dollars.
Two eighty-two, household hazards waste. Cut it, uh, knock it back to eighteen hundred?
Yeah.
Good, take it. And sorry, Steve, about this being confusing, being a nor- normal meeting and us looking at spreadsheets and cutting through.
Line two eighty-two.
Household hazards waste.
Hazardous waste.
We'd be with the library.
Be a warrant article for library two eighty.
The.
Cap lift.
The line three forty-six, library operations, what we used. Quote said, added extra monies, all online items, maintenance, and that's where the exterior, the, the power washing and the doors is mentioned. But we've already accommodated that maintenance money on that previous line item, so. Okay.
Libraries. House, and we'll help those to the exterior. Things like, you know, um, some lot, uh. Exteriors, then we have the indoor. And it has to do with something. So, some of the areas, it's on that, some of the. This one, I think. On the, sure issues, like, um, like that, and then we also got the point where. About thirty-five hundred dollars. Just for a lot of. Things like. Not to walk away. Against.
So my suggestion on that was simply to just cut back that two thousand dollar increase with a hamstring, the ability to maintain a building. At least not, not extensive. Two thousand, from forty-six oh fifty to forty-eight oh fifty.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, I'm just looking at line three forty-six, yeah, just this point in particular. So, but, yeah.
Okay, three forty, three forty-six.
Right, steady, the last year, worth of good. Forty-six. Say again? Two thousand.
So, Steve, Steve, what you need to understand is, these are, this is a final, but I wouldn't want you to share. This is kind of like our first, rapid discussion about it.
Right, this is a workshop.
Seven twenty-seven is one of the, one of the. Yeah, yeah, but I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't like you to go and say, like, that the board has decided to cut a thousand dollars from the library. There's another discussion, we could come back next week and say, it's still not there, we're gonna cut four dollars, or we're gonna add two thousand back, or whatever, so. Numbers could change.
That's all I had. I didn't have anything for the store to decide.
Kinda tough, you gotta take the only five hundred bucks I can get.
What's that?
It'd be kinda tough to take those five hundred dollars.
They're, they're only.
Everybody's gonna feel the pain, you know?
Yeah.
I, I want.
Make it to four ninety-five.
I was gonna say seven, okay.
Oh, conservation, I'm like. Not again.
I had nothing there.
I had nothing in conservation.
Yeah, I mean, Ben just wrote. Although he wants to pay off Mulligan.
Yeah.
And we. We don't have. I mean, we don't know if we can do that, that would be something.
We, we would need buy-in from the conservation.
We would need, uh, conservation to. To do this. That is the question.
Well, you know, assume the lawyer says, no, we can't. We, he's still anti-debt minded enough to still wanna pursue that?
Yeah, we talked about doing it from the, um.
Yeah, yeah.
One of those.
Surplus, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, debt service, so three sixty-six, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy-one, seventy-three, and seventy-four. 'Cause if you, if you pay off the, pay off the loans, then the interest payments go away too, so all six of those lines would zero out.
Yep.
So that, that puts us all at six.
So the grand total of that, including the adjustments we just made, drops it down a hundred and seventy thousand, a shy of one seventy, a hundred and seventy thousand eight hundred. Or a six point one nine percent increase, but that does not factor in the shared position that we've yet to find a way to pull out of this. But I think.
That's huge.
Given inflation, right? Inflation is at six and a half percent this past year. Cost of everything's going up, and, you know, I, I think that's a fair number, heck of a lot better than ten and a half, that's for sure. Just the, the, the general increase in the budget from last year. Well, this, this is interim, it's not, it's not final, but, but with the, the ideas we've come up with tonight, it's dropped the increase down to like six point two percent.
Well, that's a big part of that is paying off a lot of town debts.
Yes, that, that's very contingent on being able to pay off.
When I talk payoff, we're talking like. We don't know what the landfill is, right?
Yeah, that I don't know yet, you know, and it, and it's worth pointing out too, like, you know, in some of these letters that we've received, you know, folks are suggesting, um. To just use the money to pay down the tax rate this year, but it's worth pointing out that by paying off this debt instead, that has an impact on the tax rate over several years.
Yep.
Right, not just this year, if we took budget surplus and bought down the increase this year, it would swing around and bite us in the backside next year, you know?
You go through two thousand twenty-seven.
So this is a far, huh?
That would save us money through two thousand twenty-seven.
Twenty-eight, actually, I think. But twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Either way, that's several years of, you know, of savings.
Hey, do you know if, um, there's any, like, timing issues of when we have the approval to do that versus when payments have to be made? Just trying to figure out if it's, given the timing of all this, is it, you know, that it's completely zero next year?
I think it was due, it was due in July.
Yeah, July, two, two thousand twenty-two, on, on, and both of them same, seven thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two for both.
So.
Thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. Seven thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three, and the dates are all, all the same, all the way down through seven, seven thirty.
So like, if we, you know. We, you know, we make the decision, we vote to use fund balance to pay off those three remaining debts, and we get a payoff in, you know, payoff quote for January, six months early. Which means that, um. The interest savings will actually be slightly higher. Not a lot, but, you know, a few hundred, a few hundred bucks each.
So my question becomes, again, whatever the total, I don't know what we own totally on the fire department yet, uh, do we have that number, or what we owe on Mulligan?
He just read them off.
Total on the fire, the fire station is about thirty-two thousand, uh, eight hundred and twenty.
That's enough. Okay.
And then Mulligan's two hundred and fifty-five thousand. And then Mulligan's two hundred and fifty-five thousand. And it says, this would reduce operating and.
What about the landfill?
I don't know, it doesn't have a number for that. On two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-seven of an average of ninety thousand a year.
So. Point this out, that's almost four hundred thousand dollars for those two properties for us to pay off. We still gotta look at paying into the building over there. Uh, the old town hall, which could be another hundred thousand minimum.
Did the bids come in yet or?
Oh, we're gonna find that from Dale on Monday.
Oh, yeah.
That's why Monday's meeting, we wanna keep this to a minimum, because we have a lot of other things we have to discuss on Monday.
Right.
So we'd be then to know what our actual fund balance is. Cause I mean, potentially, we could be looking at taking out five hundred thousand dollars.
We're gonna look at those numbers, but then also look at surplus from this year's budget for that. So that, I think we're gonna, uh, what we were gonna try to do was encumber some of the this year's funds for that.
Because the state did increase the, what they think we should keep for our margin of our fund balance. That was brought up like three meetings ago.
Yeah.
How they jumped that number up on us. So we're just gonna fall in that range. I don't think we need it to be as high as they want, but that's.
Cause it's a range for all.
Right, it's huge.
So national needs more than us.
Right, huge window for what your budget is. So.
And what was the word on the?
Cause I think paying off these things would be great.
Yeah, oh, me too.
Totally fine with the idea.
Yeah.
But just again, you know, interest, some of these interest rates are really low. You know, with interest, you know, it is something where, you know, any future expenditures, you wanna make sure there's cash for also, because we don't probably wanna finance if the rates are going up. Cause those rates, you know, might not be the same today, so. And again, I just watched that when we go to, find a way to reduce the budget to get it to the six. Absolutely.
So I think, um, as far as like the town hall goes, we have to do is see what the numbers look like next week, see what his recommendation is.
Right.
Figure out how much we can, um, encumber, but then also look at what the school, what draws it, and then enter into some type of an agreement with that.
Right.
Tony, um, Sean mentioned, did you have a conversation with him during the CIP discussions about how he wants to use the, um, reserve fund to build up the reserve fund for things like culvert repair and that kinda stuff?
Don't think so.
Okay.
Don't recall, but I, I don't think so.
Let me ask him to send us something on that, cause he indicated that he wanted to do things a little differently this year and that it was, um.
Whi- which reserve fund?
Well, I mean, that was part of it, I, I think the only reserve fund that he has is highway vehicle. Right?
That's all we've ever had.
No, no, that's my point, and you can't, I don't believe you can use that for the purpose of saving money for, um, culvert repair and that kinda stuff. Because depending on how the fund is worded, if it's highway vehicle, it's gonna be vehicle, you, you.
Vehicles, right.
You'd have to change the description of the fund.
Change the definition of the fund, yeah, and the voters would have to approve that.
Yeah, I thought he had. Circle back in.
Actually, your hand is, uh. Zero percent change.
That's good work.
So what, yeah, so what I can do is put those same adjustments into the other spreadsheet to see how it turns up. Positions not included.
Well, it should come down to like four. But that would be great, let's see that.
And I could be in here Thursday morning, meet everybody, on to your first thing in the morning.
I'm actually, I'm actually done for the holidays at lunchtime tomorrow, so I could come, I could come too.
Yeah, sure, that's fine, Thursday morning, again.
Yeah.
We're not gonna change anything we did tonight, we're just answering and asking the questions of what we asked about. That's really what we're gonna do. Decision to anything about changing it until we meet again on the twenty-seventh. I just want people to know that.
Yeah.
This isn't, this isn't gonna be, I mean, I mean Tony in the back going, sure, we're gonna do this, it's not, we're just asking questions in order to answer the question.
We're gonna cut the media budget again.
Yeah.
Yeah, he'll only be able to come to every other meeting.
Yeah. We have some fuel assistance somewhere.
Yeah, no, that, that's good, that'd be great. And then, um.
On the personnel admin tab.
Yeah.
Look at line fifty-three, highway salary part-time, is that the line item for the split position?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Guess we're looking at a different spreadsheet about that, right?
What's that?
Guess we're gonna add a different sheet.
A different tab in the same, in the same document. I don't see, I don't see a line for rec part-time.
It was put in the.
Oh, was?
Oh, he's going to. Like they're half.
But you know what, Betsy shouldn't, Betsy should be able to do that too, cause she.
But one thing also I think we need to know from Monday is what the actual present day fund balance is.
We can get that from Betsy too, right?
Looking from the surplus, because remember the police department has asked about tasers and dashboards, whether those get paid. Question was her when she was here about that.
Whether they get paid.
Fund balance or purely on the warrant.
Exactly.
Okay, but we're missing, we're mixing terms here.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so fund balance, we're not talking about taking those from fund balance. Fund balance is.
Surplus.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Surplus goes into the fund balance, but before it goes there, we use as a surplus to spend, gotcha, I know. I, I know what you mean.
But either way, not putting one of them as a warrant article.
Right, we had a discussion about that, so that's something that's also gonna be on.
Yeah, I think the question of, that we were, was which one would go on the warrant, which one would not.
Or could we afford to pay for both?
So I think it, it depends on like what that's gonna cost.
Sure, again, that was the huge, the elephant in the room.
What the town, the old town.
Old town hall, yeah, yeah.
Cause that's where we, we, that, that and the kitchen, I think, is where we talked about using it and.
With this year's money.
With this year's money. I'm totally fine with leaving. And the ashcans as warrant articles, because they're the passing. Right? So.
I think, I think they will, absolutely, I'm not worried about it one bit, but that's.
No, and everybody, the sentiment on the budget committee was that people can't, don't have them already.
Everybody.
So, I just.
Well, same thing with the, the laptops in the cars. That posted through, everybody's like, what, they don't have them? They need those.
So I'd rather leave those as warrant articles.
Okay.
Gives us something to pull out of them.
So if.
That'll be on discussion from Monday.
What's that?
That'll be on discussion from Monday.
So if I go home and transplant these adjustments that we've made tonight to the other sheet, and I'll mail both of them to everybody.
That'd be great. Should work. Yeah.
Is there any more, anybody wants to add to the budget from what we was talking about from tonight?
Yeah, let's increase the flex warrant salaries by.
Yeah.
One million dollars.
Uh, seeing everybody's anymore, uh, gonna give you guys one quick chance to ask any questions since you two are here, you good?
I was here, I was here to answer your question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. And I did get that stuff on the CIP. I updated the sheet.
Uh, no, there is no non-public tonight.
We got zero times two.
So seeing nothing, can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
No, we do not.
Nothing, nothing for non-public. Motion to adjourn.
We can talk about you in public, Steve.
Motion to adjourn, motion adjourn.